Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
There being none, we'll move straight into the on-year review of the Town Board Checklist, one of the most important things we do at the Board. So without further ado, I will read each name. If there's any that's gotten, then just speak up and we'll be right now.
All right, that was one of the people you were sharing. What, what, I imagine A is actor or another actor, it's speed.
Challenge, so they've already been challenged, well, absolutely. But really when you challenge them again, I just can't remove them. Or just like one time.
And it is a multi-year process, correct?
Yeah, it's for general elections after I got.
Thanks.
Yeah. We're gonna have to share it.
That actually.
No, it's like first of the challenge. He's, he's a winner. If they're challenged, how many times do you have to challenge before you remove? They only stay challenged once. I can't remove them until they have not responded to any of the two general elections. So that's like eight years they stay on. Of not voting.
So there'll be some reviews from the last time.
It doesn't mean it's voted twice anymore.
Okay, Charlie Acker. David Acker. Claire Adams. Elizabeth Adams. Benjamin Adkoff. Haley Ahern. Francis Alfred. Aaron Anderson. Jacob Aaron. Gail Arbuckle. Jim Arsenbaugh. Jason Arsenbaugh. Kent Armstrong. Edward Arnold. Jesse Bacon. Cherry Bacon. Stephanie Bacon. Joshua Bartlett. Sheena Bartlett. Dylan Bates. Sam Badalino. Janet Beck. Brian Becker. Paula Benson. Brad Bernstein. John Bernstein. George Berube. Janice Berube. Arab Blodgett. Darlene Voskanov. Marcel Voskanov. Donald Bolton. Catherine Bonk. Tammy Bonk. James Bristol. William Brooks. Sherry Brown. William Brown. John Brier. Kathleen Brier. Brendan Bueller. Lynn Bueller. Ralph Bueller. Scott Bueller. Sean Burke. Florence Bert. Nicole Booser. Jean Cadell. Sarah Campbell. Dorothy Cannon. Arlene Perry. Prinzip Tronchada. Barbara Carey. Ronald Carey. Linda Carter. Mary Carter. Randall Chalit. Anne Chase.
Can we go back to Linda and Mary?
Yeah, they no longer have property here.
Exactly right. They never sent me anything. The other one I did was Charlie. So do I have permission for Mary and Linda to be challenged?
Um, is she residing out of country?
Well, I'm not even sure.
I know that.
I think talk was she was going to, but I'm not sure. She is, which means that she can stay on our checklist.
Correct.
But I don't know about.
But I don't know about Mary.
Where my students are.
I don't know her status currently. Um, we could find out from Charlie who is in Sackville River. I mean, it's.
I don't know if it'll even forward to Route 121 anymore. Is Mary a military? No, she just moved over there. I forget where the papers are, something like that. Which is close.
Definitely.
Do I challenge or not?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, to cover ourselves.
Both Mary and I don't know, just Wendy.
I would say both.
Okay, sorry.
Any further discussion on Linda Carter, Mary Carter being challenged? Randall Chalit. Anne Chase. Donald Clark. John Clark. Matthew Dayton. Rebecca Clark. Mary Clemente. Elizabeth Cole. John Cole. Catherine Conklin. Margaret Conquest Gonzalez. Lindsay Cook. Sarah Cooper. Patrick Cooperman. Lucia Corwin. John Crowe. Adam Culver. David Culver. Mary Beth Culver. Robert Culver. Jeffrey Courier. Amber Cunningham. Robin Dale.
Um, sorry, Adam is no longer here. Am I right? I think he's.
Was Adam Culver?
Yeah, Culver. So was that a challenge?
Amber Cunningham.
What?
Nothing.
Will Vanforth. Elise Pacino. Tom Demming.
She's still here. John Demming. We tried, no, but every year, every other year I challenge John and Johnson's back is challenged. Saying he, his intent. Yeah. I can try, I can try and challenge him. Yeah, absentee. This might have been his mom, so, you know, it was a place, so.
You want to challenge?
What's everyone's census?
I challenge.
Not try it again?
Whatever.
Okay. Okay.
Tracy DeShane. Richard DeRocher. Vance DeWitt. Amber DeBona. Elizabeth Ann DeBolt. Julie Deers. Michael Dion. Deborah Dixon. Mary Doherty. Charles Dolan. Jamie Dolan.
I'm challenged, Jamie.
Yeah, she's been challenged previously, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah.
Matt Dolan. Michelle Dolan. Mary Ann Donald. Robert Donald. Adrian Donatelli. Donald Dugall. Julie Douglas. Lorraine Douglas. Rayford Walter Douglas. Amy Downing. Candace Raven. Gerald Raven. Michelle Duport. Raymond Duran. Olivia Dyson. F. Henry Ellis. Heather Leanne Ellis. James Ellis. Matthew Ellis. Patricia Ellis. Michael Faulkner. Wendy Faulkner. Henry Thader.
Who would challenge last night?
Yes, Linda.
Yeah, Henry was. Um. Lucy Baller. Lucy Thader. I don't know if that's a legal name or not. Oh, my goodness, I don't know whether it has been going to be legal or not. Um, Mary Thader. Christopher Carrara. Lynn Field. Michael Field. Gail Ann Fisher. Catherine Fisher. Stephen Fisher. Stuart Fisher. Warren Fisher. Rebecca Fletcher Rogers. Charles Flick. Jane Flick. Hannah Ford. Brenda Fowler. Deborah Franks. John Frenette. Sherry Frenette. Catherine Gabriel. Marilyn Gabriel. Mark Gabriel. Chris Garoppa. Elizabeth Garcia de Alba. Jason Garcia de Alba. Luis Garcia de Alba. Christopher Gates. Deborah Gervais. Henry Gervais. Tori Gervais. Kathleen Jessi. Cynthia Gibbs. Jason Gibbs. Ronald Gibbs. Rooney Gibbs. Sean Goldsmith. Gilberto Gomez. Jorge Gonzalez. Kirk Goodwin. James Glory. Kathleen Rabel. Eileen Gregory.
I don't know, Irene Gregory.
I don't know, it could be Rivera.
Heather Gregory. Jamie Gregory. John Gregory. Linda Jo Gregory. Raymond Gregory. Henry Griffith. Angel Gross. Carol Ann Hadibuki. Bernard Haley. David Hall. Nora Lee Hall. Robert Hall. Catherine Halleck. John Halleck. Kelly Halleck. Paul Halleck. Robert Halleck. Sadie Halleck. Carol Hampshire. James Hampshire. Mark Hansel. Joyce Hanson. Nathan Harford. Leif Harmon. Marshall Hartman. Wayne Hartman. Kevin Hazeltime. Megan Hazeltime. Robert Hazeltime. Margaret Hawn. Erica Hearn. Margaret Camp, Mar. Margaret Hendrick, she's moved. Pete Hermes. Dre Hobbs. William Hoffman. Andrew Hogan. Michael Holmes. Roma Holmes. Gary Hook. Maxwell Hook. Charles Hooker. Amanda Horwell, Horwetal. Michael House. Clifton Hawkins. Catherine Hawkins. Matthew Hawkins. William Hawkins. Lacey Hudson. David Hunt. Stephen Niema. Taylor Inesta. Jose Inesta Rodriguez. Gary Yakimuk. Ronnie Johnson. Pamela Johnson Spurlock. Alan Jones. Benjamin Jones. Kelly Jones. Laura Dorsak. Thomas Kane. Wendy Kastner. Wendy Ahn, she was.
She gone?
She was next door.
She was right next door, she was here.
Oh, she was one of the head vocals?
Yeah. Brent Kaufman. Cheryl Kaufman. Mary Ann Kearns. William Kearns. Anna Keegan. Stephen Keegan. Demi Hyton. Paulie Kelsey. Mindy Kelsey. Brenda Kenyon. Judith Kenyon. Triton Catola. Christopher King. John King. David Kenny. Susan Kenny. Elizabeth Laird. Tracy Lake. Rachel La Liberté. Susan Lacra. Nicole Laurel. Dee Scott Lawrence. Diana Lawrence. Ethan Lawrence.
He was challenged.
He had been a student at one time, but.
Yeah, he's no longer a student, but. It's hard to handle him. When they live here? We know.
I don't think so.
But I think he challenged. Yeah, he had been once.
Yes.
He's had them another.
Um, G. Roderick Lawrence. Henry Lawrence.
Henry's in Canada, so he's been challenged once.
Yep. Sharon Lawrence. Jacqueline LeBlanc. Patrick LeBlanc. Clint Lee. Lawrence Lewis. Carol Lynn. Mariah Lee Kay. Ray Liotta. Elise Lyle. Forrest Lyle. Lawrence Lyle. Jean Licks. Miranda Lockerbie. William Lockwood. Penney S. Walker. Louis. Boye. Rachel Lovins. Joseph Lupiani. Juneau Lupiani. Jenner Lyman. Connor McGeherne. Deanna McGeherne. Paul McGeherne. Edmund Mack. Katie Mack. Kimberly Mack. Patricia Mack. Sarah Mack. Stanley Mack. Avery McLean. Eliza McLean. Denise Martin. Janet Martin. Joseph Martin. Wendy J. Martin. Christine Master Pietro. Albert Matt. Margaret Matt. Ryan McGrath. Kevin McHugh. Dana McIntyre. Dana L. McIntyre. Dana Elizabeth McIntyre. Kelly McNamara. Michael Midas. Edward Merrill. Artie Merrill. Nancy Merrill. Nicholas Merrill. Sharon Merrill. Ashley Metcalf. Christopher Nickler. Michael Middleton. Nancy Middleton. Oh, she's moved.
Who's gone?
Michael's still in the Foreign Service.
So he can stay on. Christopher is challenged?
Michael Middleton, I mean Nancy Middleton. She left because she's moved. Ashley Milbauer. Crystal Milbauer. Heidi Milbauer. James R. Milbauer. James R. Milbauer. Kurt Milbauer. McKenna Milbauer. Corinne Marie Miles. Cheryl Miller. Marissa Miller Bennett. Joseph Moffitt. Wilder Moffitt. Maxwell Molinari. Joseph Montcalvo. Linda Montcalvo. Craig Moore. James Moravsky. Hyton Moravsky. Megan Moretti. Dylan Morton. Nicole Morton. Sean Morton. Alice Mosley. Enrico Mosley. David Mulrath. Kathleen Mulrath. Ryan Murphy. David Naughton. Kevin Neathaw. Thomas Nielsen. Lisa Nyami Kissel. Barbara Nolan. Stephen Nolan. David Norton. Dana Orsucci. Haley Orsucci. Kristen Orsucci. Ross Orsucci. Constance Osgood. Lindsay Osgood. Penny Osgood. Robert Osgood. William Osgood. Wyatt Osgood. Kathleen Taggert. Seth Taggert. Linnea Palmer. Timothy Palmer. Arthur Park. Chad Parker. Maureen Parker. Michael Parker. John Patterson. David Pelland. Sharon Pelland. Anis, Anis Pelletier. Herb Pelletier. Kristen Perkins. Betsy Perry. David Perry. Douglas Perry. Robert Pierce. Serena Pearson. Estelle P. Anna Pillett. Lydia Pillett. Ronald Pillett. Theo Pillett. Galen Pinkham. Joanne Plough. Deborah Plummer. Helen Plummer. John Plummer. Joseph H. Plummer. Joseph A. Plummer. Catherine Plummer. Raymond Michael Plummer. Elizabeth Palio. Joseph Palio. Austin Powers. Jordan Powers. Linda Pretziosi. Peter Pretziosi. Sharon Priestger.
She's still here.
Yeah.
Really?
Elizabeth Provo. Samuel Provo. Dominic Politano. Twyla Putnam. Loretta Queen. William Queen. Yeah, they've been challenged previously.
They challenged, I think. Uh, Ken, just that it's gonna come back and solve their addresses or like obsolete.
Michael Randlet. Elizabeth Randlet. Francis Raymond. Sandra Reidler. Anne Record. Paulie Record. Kimberly Record. Lisa Record. Maya Record. Rodney Record. Russell Record. Donna Rice. Irene Rice. Craig Ricketts. Dana Ricketts. Darlene Ricketts. Joseph Rivas. Holly Roberts. Jason Roberts. Linda Robertson. Norman Robertson. Pamela Robinson. Raymond Robinson. Heather Rodriguez. Michael Rodriguez. David Rogers. Sarah Rogers. David A. Ross. Judy A. Ross. John Rounds. Ronald Rounds. Chester Rowe. Alicia Rowe. Dorothy Royal. Craig Ruggles. Elsie Rushton. Mark Rushton. Samuel Rushton. Susan Rushton. Terry Russ. Jonathan Sable. Alan Sands. Maureen Sands. Samantha Samwar. Stephen Sargent. John Sarah. Dennis Sharba. Burgess Shem. Eva Shem. Oliver Shem. Paul Shem. Elon Shem. Karen Shephards. Susan Shuck. John Senachal. Michael Sharet. Anita Siano. Anthony Siano. Catherine Siano. Matthew Siano. Doreen Silva. Theodore Slavcinsky. Mark Mall. Jeffrey Smith. George Smith. James Smith. Michelle. Darcy Sprague. Robert Sprague. Cynthia Spurlock. Glenn Spurlock. Patrick Spurlock. Dominic Squire Rustino. Shiloh St. Pierre. Eric Stevens. Michelle Stevens. Nathaniel Stevens. Orson Stevens. Sandra Stevens. Thomas Stevens. Margaret Stewart. Gregory St. Lawrence. Linda St. Lawrence. David Stone. Kevin Sue. Ellen Spezzi. John Spezzi. Nancy Spezzi.
Okay, good. Those were her parents, I believe, and they both died.
What you want, Joan and Nancy?
Joan and Nancy. They're both. And I would double check that. I don't need to challenge them if there has been a death. I can just remove them.
Katrina Tallman. Elizabeth Tamborino. Norma Tamborino. Mark Camzer. Sharon Camzer. Anne Tarmey. Marion Tenney. Michael Ferenzetti. Edward Tetral. Elizabeth Tetral. Michelle Tetral. Alan Thomas. Madison Thomas. Sandra Thomas. Clayton Thompson. Diane Thompson. Grace Thompson. Mary Thompson. Richard Thompson, J. Thompson. Richard Carlisle Thompson. Champion Tilbrook. Penney S. Tillman. Deborah Toomey. William Toomey. Thomas Toscano. Andrea Turner. John Turner. Christine Usak. Christopher Vanderme, Vandermeade. Julian Vandermeade. Justin View. I'm not sure that he's in town.
Which one?
Justin View.
Justin View.
And do you want me to challenge or?
I would, yeah, challenge. That was, um, Janet and George Berube's. Off street that day.
Oh, okay.
Years ago.
Okay.
Uh, Dean Vogel.
He's really isn't here, resident? He's here, right? I mean, neither of them.
Who, Justin?
No, Dean Vogel.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I guess. Christopher Wallace. Janine Walsh. Joan Walsh. Luann Ward. Richard Warren. Sarah Warren. William Watson. Brenda Waisville. Michael Waisville. Crystal Webster. Travis Webster. Suzanne Welch. Jessica Westfar. Joseph Westfar. Judith Wechler. Richard Wechler. Holly Whitcomb. Kenneth Whitcomb. Robert Whitcomb. Deborah White. George White. Michael White. Jerry Whitley. Lisa Whitley. David Woodall. Cody Wilbur. Corey Wilbur. Donna Wilbur. Christopher Wilder. James Wilson. Lorene Wilson. Melissa Wilson. Priscilla Wilson. Leela Wilson Day. Charles Woodman.
Did he die?[1544.24]
No, uh, this is the grandson.
Oh, okay.
He's living next to the fire station over there. Charles, Charles E. K. Woodman, Carol Wright, Deborah Wright, Douglas Wright, Jean Wright. He moved?
What's that? Jean Wright?
Tree, which one?
He moved? Yeah, Jean did, yeah.
Robert Wright, Dale Wyman, Danny Wyman, Hollis Wyman, Calvin Wyman, Myron Wyman, Tina Wyman, Barbara Zander, Brian Zander, Sarah Yurovovich, Leah Johann, Johannin, Lori Young, Michael Young.
On, um, it writes Carol Wright, is she still in town? Sarah, you're talking about Doug Wright's ex-wife, yeah. Okay, so can we challenge? Yeah. Anybody see anything else?
What's that?
No, he was. He was, now he's not a challenge.
Okay, so this time I entertain a motion to purge the names mentioned for challenge. Motion by Wendy Martin, but a second. Second, but it's a tragic discussion. There being none, all those in favor of, um, purging or, uh, were challenging or purging. All those in favor of challenging the names mentioned, both by saying aye, aye, opposed. The motion is in period. We have any other business before this board? There being none, I will make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Wendy, second by Joe, discussion being none, all those in favor, both by saying aye, aye. Can we adjourn?
Fourteen forty-six. On Monday at seven twenty-three, uh, at the town hall upstairs. Okay, and we have a motion to adjourn. Wait a second. Any discussion on the agenda? If not, all in favor say aye, opposed. Okay, we have the, we have three minutes to go. The first one is the public hearing on July seventeen twenty-three. Are there any additions or corrections? If there are none, somebody make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, of the public hearing on July seventeen twenty-three. There's no discussion, all favor say aye, opposed. Okay, the next is the regular meeting, regular second meeting of July seventeen twenty-three. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the three minutes of the regular meeting of July seventeen twenty-three. No discussion, all favor say aye, opposed. Okay, and the last one is the emergency meeting of July twenty-four twenty-three. Do are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? I'm gonna make a motion to accept the minutes of the emergency meeting of July twenty-four twenty-three. All favor say aye, opposed. Uh, okay, we have to amend the.
Yeah, so, um, Kim Kanarek, he's from the state of Vermont, uh, sent a notice saying that the federal procurement policy allows for um, open competition of projects over twenty thousand dollars and our original purchasing policy said a hundred and fifty thousand, is that correct?
No, no. I almost said a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Anything over that, you have to put out the bids, advertise, put out the bids. FEMA's policy is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which that is the right lines that we follow, so we want to increase that to two hundred and fifty. If you stick with one twenty-five, what happens is any project that's one twenty-five, above one twenty-five, you've got to go through the process of advertising and that could hold up a project, so we don't get it done anywhere.
But that's fine, I just need a signature.
Well, somebody should make a motion to amend the policy from five to fifty. Any other discussion? If not, all favor, amend the policy. Now, everybody has a silence, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So is that, is that just pertaining to one emergency declaration that because we still keep our normal policy related?
That's for all.
Because we still have a five thousand, right?
It's, it's everything. If you bid out for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you have to go advertise it and get bids. And if you go to the FEMA's policy, which is two hundred and fifty thousand, you don't have to do that, but reach it. And that saves you time when you want to do something another.
Like for trucks, things like that, or like in trucks, like when we purchase our truck, no, if it's good for emergency purpose. I have the whole thing, and there is a section in here that says if federal funding is used for purchases between three thousand, oh, sorry, for all major purchases with a value between five and twenty thousand, price and rate quotation shall be obtained from at least three qualified vendors to ensure that the town is received a fair and reasonable price. I think that falls under what you're talking about. But what happens like when we purchase trucks are regular?
That has nothing to do with it.
Okay, that's why I wondered. Right, that's what I was.
Okay, the next item is the Kitter Hill reappraisal. I guess that's your friend.
Yes, um, so when you made this inspection and just getting over everything, you came across that you have very old bridge appraised for a number of two thousand dollars. Um, we always have carried that through since I inherited twenty years ago. So he thought we might want to consider having it reappraised and bring the value up and pay something out of the bridge. He thought maybe it would be, you know, two, three hundred dollars, but we found out the appraiser gave us actually three thousand dollars for it to become an appraised bridge. So I reached out to passive and talked to Steve and, um, right now we pay three hundred and fifty dollars a year premium for the Kitter Hill Bridge. And it insured for a hundred and forty-seven.
Okay.
If we were to bump it to five hundred thousand, because if we were to go over five hundred thousand, we would need an appraiser. But we can alone change the year value of it up to five hundred on our own, and that would cost us a premium of twelve hundred and twenty-seven dollars a year. Um, so yeah, there would be an increase, but we also have an increase that replaced it. But if we go over five hundred thousand, we have to think think that we're going to be earning more than that, and we do have to go through an actual formal appraisal, which could run us three thousand dollars.
Well, let's do something happen to the bridge, okay, it fall down during the flood. Does it seem to cover that?
I, from the way they recover for, I would think they would have to replace the bridge as it is because there are policies that.
Yeah, I mean, it's all washed down the road, down the river.
Wouldn't that be an opportunity to fit in a normal bridge?
Yes, yes. I'm trying to get to the point.
Well, FEMA replaces one second.
They put it back to what it was.
So that was.
So you wouldn't have a normal bridge, probably not.
But that's different than insurance, at least of just, you know, and I can't run through and show you how it's better to go with it. Then now you'd be five hundred thousand.
Or on fire. Or, or somebody goes over.
But it collapsed.
So it's.
Right. So, uh, our first thought is for right now, at least bump it to five hundred thousand for our value. We don't want to increase our premium. But at least we'll be a little closer to whatever the case of value would be unless the board decides to go with a more lawful appraisal.
And the premium would be set twelve hundred, is that?
About twelve twenty-seven, you know, that, that's, we're doing it annually, so we can't hold her to it because we have to have a really good system.
Is anybody having an idea of what costs would be like that bridge? I mean, a covered bridge, not a, not a skilled bridge. Well, the reason why they can insure it for five hundred thousand dollars is the bridge had to go on fire, and of course, uh, and, and what two million dollars to replace it, insurance really doesn't do.
Right, well, that's, you know, that's where we're at, do we want to take the chance on how the bridge is and?
How much can you say the bridge will be?
At least three thousand, yes, the name is. Right, Morgan, that's correct.
Three thousand dollars, right?
There's very few of that doing for covered bridges. Yeah, that's kind of specialized.
Well, what is, what is, what do you, what does the board want to do on the bridge? Do you want to up the insurance or just stay with it and? It seems like five hundred thousand dollars would not be enough to protect the bridge. I don't think it would be either, why are we paying that, that insurance against not even? Like, if you had a potash that's collapsed or, or, or something, we set off or something, then I guess the five hundred thousand would probably cover that, but if it washes down the road, it was river.
So you'd like to do a full appraisal?
I'm not, I don't, I didn't say that. I, I just admit, I'd like to see it just be. Neither end or there.
Is there historical? Sassy, why it's? It's not a bridge.
It's not a bridge.
Not a spoken bridge.
No, no. But wasn't this repaired or replaced one time years ago?
No, our time are paid for to pay that grants and replace the bridge. It's not an old bridge.
Was it ever? Was it on the cover of Jane?
Yeah.
It's all. I want to tell you this, something happens to it.
I think I leave it alone.
Leave it alone and something happens, you put on a regular bridge.
I mean, if, if, if we have a flood and the bombs go, then FEMA was going to replace it, yes, maybe we can replace it a little wider, so you get a truck through it. So what is it, what do you want to do? Just leave it alone?
So no, it's, it's fine, no increase at all, not in value, just.
And what do we have insured for right now?
One forty-seven.
It's really.
I'm just to repair it, but insurance or not?
Three fifty per year. The bridge is insured at a hundred forty-two, eight twenty-seven.
I mean, actually, that's a joke. I don't, you can't do anything with it.
Well, that was my thought of going to apply and maintain the twelve hundred premium, that at least it would cover everyone who had enjoyed something, um, something that's.
Why do we even insure it?
I inherited that twenty years ago, it's always on there.
My time probably wanted to insure it, it's not bad.
You wanted it built. Is that a class three nerve that goes up in there?
Yes.
But it wouldn't have to be insured, I mean, although it has insurance, a bridge on a class.
And we're insured in the other times, I mean, water and insurance. I guess the Burgess insurance.
No, yeah, Burgess has insurance.
Why would you give it insured?
I, I think it was back years ago, that Halloween people were tempted to burn it down.
So what do we want to do? Do we want to keep it, get rid of it, or increase it? If you do, can't make a motion. Somebody make a motion that, that we just don't insure it, I guess, etc. All right, I'll make a motion to no longer insure the Kitter Hill Bridge. Are there any other discussions in the audience or anything? If not, all favor say aye. Yes, well, okay, so can we save them, but? John, I guess you wanted to, um, to increase the rates, uh, for a Atashi three hundred seven.
Yeah, there's a big excavator coming in, but we won't have a rate for that. Want to do it? Uh, two seventy-five.
Today?
Two seventy, no.
We just have that on the list, you know, we want to add this to the, to the list.
What did you say to?
Two seventy-five.
Somebody want to make a motion that we add the Atashi three hundred excavator to the already existing, um, list for, uh, for rates? So, any other discussion?
Where do we get this? Where does he get this estimate?
I don't know. We rented it, I'm sure.
It comes with a contractor.
Or the contractor, yes. This is kind of, this is just.
Yes. Yeah, they're doing the rapid river.
So you just have to have a rate, and that's.
Right, yes, whatever you're doing, we're standing.
So all favor say aye, aye, opposed, okay, Mike, you're up on a higher rate for it.
Um, pretty much, we're dealing with floods, uh. Um, we're down to pretty much rapid the rivers, uh, with the, the blocks down on Eastman, it could be something that have to be addressed, but that would probably be at a later date. Probably towards maybe next spring, when the road, road down will be there. Um, everything else is pretty well, back together, their payments up for bid for the patching. I would have to assume Dajian's looking at doing that, so I wouldn't be surprised if maybe throw a number in there and try to do everything at the same time and they show up, you might guess if they get it.
Do we have a date for the payment yet?
They just said September originally. But you never know with that, well, just the weather, it doesn't help on, on a Friday day. Other than that, I've been spending, actually going along very smoothly. We're getting there, and hopefully we can get back to our normal stuff.
I had a chance to, you know, over the deep end of Ford's Road, that, that came out really nicely.
Yeah. Challenge a few spot, but, yeah. Um, I put a, a call out, we're, uh, we're covering a Miltown Road, I'm still waiting for a response. Um, so they have to go to the channels, you know, give back to me a couple of days, I'm sure with a, with a date to check it, so.
That's delicious.
Then you plan on doing that, right? No, no.
But what's happened now? That one happened this year.
Yeah. Comes, it's going to be put in that day or the next day.
Get it to our table first, and then, yeah.
What about the stuff in the river that's? I mean, you've taken out the stuff that's jammed on the bridges, but the other stuff stays in.
You can't take it out.
Can't take it out.
As far as the trees and the birds. Then we don't leave it there.
If you, if you, I read an article, I, one of the, one of bigger, the one of those things. According to the efficient game, the trees and the rocks are, are beneficial to stop flooding and keep the fish and everybody happy. I can't imagine how it can be beneficial when you have these laws in there, and if they need to clog up a bridge, the water is going to go somewhere, it's going to go around the bridge or either one. But that's, but that's what they said. Yeah, I heard you say great.
It's a state of.
We go over to, um, and all, where the, um, trailer pack, painting ground. We're over there today and rigging that whole area with a big excavator for the river.
Some places they'll let you, some places they won't, you know, it's.
You're allowed to go in the river, right?
Yeah, they have piles, they have piles of water on the river. Oh.
What about the? Roof, like we've been standing on the Walker Bridge.
Has it been moved yet? No.
Is it the fourth of?
No, it's not.
I don't know what it is.
What is?
Is that what it is? Can you have anything on?
No, um, tax stills went out, first payment's moved one third of August rather than the fifteenth. Um, some of them powers have been already at the office doing their professional audit. Um, and will be there probably on the holiday tomorrow. The only other thing, um, I just wanted to bring up that eventually we wanted to talk about the sidewalk out front. So we can address that at some point.
Well, then we'll leave it on. Uh, I'm waiting on record concrete and I still need to reach out to Steve Fisher, and I think the other one was Nathaniel Moise.
And then the other thing that was on my radar for this year, I think they're talking more again, is our fire state.
I contacted, um, Carol concrete today about that.
So, yeah. Those are the only two kind of important things that have been on my radar.
It's been a little delayed with a lot of others.
That is Carol, well, we.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know if anybody, I, I, I ended with the the orders today, and I got a couple of questions, and so if you have time, you may want to go and see them tomorrow.
Yeah, Jenna will be there tomorrow on chat lounge today, so feel welcome to stop in and say hi there. say hi to her, Cam, down in the office. What I asked about, um, there's been some donations from a couple of people from Saxon River. How is that going to be used that money? Does blood relief? What I asked them, actually, today I asked them, um, the auditors themselves, you know, what should I do? Eight hundred dollars came in from, um, I know they're in the Saxon River. Um, they just said it put it into the line item of other income as in donations. Um, eventually the number we use um, for one dollar back. We could, um, use that money. Unless, and I'm thinking, okay, that's, that's fine, but does, if the board has something else they'd rather do with it, it was an eight hundred dollar check.
Was it, was it earmarked for anything?
It just said blood relief on it. It's taken, and I also think we should probably have a formal thank you sent out to them.
Ryan, I sent you, I mailed them a letter today thanking them for that.
What if it's blood relief, is that specific to those that impacted by the flood? He never said, it just blood relief to use at our discretion.
And they could that be used for repairing a culprit or something?
I guess anything, and the way I guess the auditors looked at it, that's kind of the thing put it in with our donations and then when we have to pay our five or ten percent or whatever we pay um, at the end for our town share of FEMA, we could, you know, use that. And sometimes I feel that kind of just gets swallowed up into the general fund, whether there's a deficit or surplus and it kind of just that really earmarked for it unless you guys have a certain use for it. I guess because it was bloody, it was maybe it goes, people, whatever, and acted by the blood, it helps them. I don't know. I don't know if it's by the people themselves or the, the actual town. Because it would be hard to do just like people, not anybody.
It can give you really hard to split amongst, you know, you have to specifically choose each individual. I think that would be really.
This first time's ever happened?
Yeah. I've never had a donation come in for one or any.
Who, who are they?
It's on the end of this. It's tight. It's not like tight crowd though. It's tight. Yeah, the Saxon River, um, Main Street hours.
Are they new people here?
No, they don't seem like so. They've been teachers at the one academy. They what? They've been teachers at the one academy, probably was.
Okay.
They were academy. Oh, okay. I had no idea that they were and.
Right.
It was very, very, so I was surprised.
Um, does the personal committee have any, um?
No.
No, no other community, what's I don't think.
Uh, that is one thing, there's a pre-construction meeting of Locka Bridge on his twenty first. On Zoom. At ten o'clock.
So they're gonna, they're gonna just go, huh?
Yep.
It isn't running behind, but they were supposed to be there at July eighth.
So is that for the whole board to just? Look at that when you send the Zoom last one? Why not here?
What permission? Wendy.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't go there. I got to wait. Yeah, that's right. When he's ready. Uh, any other business?
I don't know. I think I'm bringing up who's type for. That Bill turns at this moment is uh, at the London jury select board meeting, being interviewed or to help them with their flood. I don't think that's much of a concern, but I think what he was going to do is run that out of his office over there using that equipment. And I mentioned that I didn't, that was a good idea. I thought I'd bring up your board and see what they thought. As far as him working for London area, I think if you were there, but he's going to continue on working here.
But I did talk to Bill and he assured, he assured us the board that he would continue to put graphing first if, if need be. And I, I, I had the same reaction to John. I don't think people up to London there should use their computers, not they shouldn't, shouldn't be using our electric or paper or whatever else here.
That makes sense.
And he was gonna come. He said he needed to know, I think, but he probably will be here for the thing. He was, he was, I think it was the day that I gave him this, whether he was going to use him or not, was that?
Yeah. For said it to the rest of the board, yeah.
He might not, you know, he might not have been elected to do it, but. Any other business? Any public comment? And Wendy?
I know you're all usually in a period at home, but I think it's really inconvenient for people to get here late when you start a meeting or asking for nothing to do. So I would ask if you're going to do this, you like, let people know like a month in advance to them. Because I had a draft news, you were starting at six o'clock and I think two people coming along tonight, so.
Well, we can't, I mean, you can't do it a month in advance when we don't know.
I think you could do it at six o'clock.
Well, I.
You're making people come to the V C A meeting at five fifteen, considering that, which is fine, but I think you have to be consistent. And I know that it's not wrong to do it, but I think it's inconsistent, that's all.
And then a public comment? The next regular meeting.
Oh, sorry, one thing, we got that email from the resident on Townsend. Did you get a chance to read that?
No.
Do you want me to read it out loud?
Which one is this?
I think it's important that, um,
she and her husband and her two young kids live at fifteen twenty eight Townsend Road. Which I didn't look on the map, but I think that's right before he and.
Yeah. They've done, they've done a lot.
Yeah. You want to read it? Okay. So she addressed this to the select board and I sent it along to you tonight. It says, hello all. Adam and I moved into our house on Townsend Road at the very end of two thousand nineteen. And in the short time since we have made it our home, we have poured blood, sweat and tears into a complete renovation, brought home our two babies to the house and felt immense joy as this town became our community. We have begun to picture our family and grass to mineral stages of life, but recently that picture feels more uncertain. Our two concerns presently are the cars that go speeding by our home with zero enforcement and a lack of mitigation for increasing extreme weather events. Our property is on a narrow strip between the road and the river and such as and as such, we feel the consistent stress of speeding cars and now the ever living threat of flooding from the river. The most recent flood came within four or five feet from the house at the closest point and ran through the fence in the patio area that Adam had just come completed as a safe play area for our children. Watching the emergency video, emergency meeting video back a few weeks ago, we felt validated in our concerns and then discouraged as we re- realized there doesn't seem to be a clear plan to address these issues. We hear a lot being said about how this town needs young families. But if that is the case, we need to do more to make this town a safe place for the littlest residents to live and play. I would like to add our, I would like to add our voices to those calling for lowered speed limits, increased police enforcement and our electronic speed signs. Our stretch of road is right before the increase to fifty miles per hour. And as a result, it is un, it is not uncommon to hear cars revving their engines before they even reach our house. Then there are those who completely ignore the speech, speed limits altogether. Add to this the knowledge that there has been instances of impaired driving on our street and it becomes extremely concerning. In regards to the flooding, we aren't sure where to even begin. We had to evacuate our house for a week amid continued flood warnings as we simply can't take any risks when it comes to our children's safety. We came home to our property covered and still in debris. We eat, uh, we've been too discouraged to even begin the cleanup. We have contacted all appropriate agencies and it seems they will not step in unless our house itself is infected. Two years ago, the water came close. This summer it came closer. We feel like it is only a matter of time and we do not feel safe. I know we can't all, all build firms and it feels like there isn't a plan in place to address the increasing frequency of flooding as our climate continues to change. Not everyone in town will have a property impacted, but there needs to be solidarity as we move forward. We wish to, we wish we could have been there in person to participate in this production tonight. However, we look forward to being a part of the solution in the future. Thanks, Adam and Cam.
Well, I, I think, uh, I think the board used to address the sheriff and probably increased, I don't know, or, or re- rethink the speed limit signs or whatever you want to do. But I don't know how the town can help flooding. I don't know. I mean, I, like, I don't know how you mitigate that. Certainly, uh, FEMA doesn't want to mitigate anything. They just want to replace it. So then I think in making it better. So I don't know how, I don't know how you respond to that. But frankly.
So nothing can be done to prevent the water from coming closer to these people's homes like a burn or something? Built away from, it just protects the home. You can't do that.
What the town can't do? I mean, if you did it, then you had to look like.
The state will let you do it. The state will not let you do it.
I'm not even sure you can.
No, you can't. The state will let you do it. They will not let you build burns and they want the auditors' fault.
Want the water to spread out.
It's crazy.
So I think we have to answer. And, uh, you know, I just don't know what, what, how you address the flooding problem. I mean, it's, it's way above our pay rate. I mean, there's nothing we can, it's a state issue. There's a flood mitigation stuff as a state policy.
And federal.
A local council or it does not happen, but. Friends with the capacity to deal with it.
But I think you can say that we, we would be thinking or taking, taking a hard look at um, you know, perhaps additional police presence.
What times of day the police, the police force come out in the morning, I heard it's a scene. They have, they switch off when they come, do we know?
Most of the time it's like eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Here, they don't, too bad, when they have this traffic. Or when I see them.
Yeah, that's the last thing. I never seen them do that. Yeah. Parents. They're just cool. I mean, I, I haven't seen any of them. I don't see them in the morning.
They're around just the hills sometimes around three, three, four, five.
Yeah. What about that? Because these people have done on the towns.
I don't know how much to go down there. We have to look on our, um.
Uh, yeah. You just send that graphic off. Yeah. Wendy?
I think you talked about how you had it on the town meeting more a few years ago. But I think if you did it, and I'm glad now that I was sort of saying, um, you would get those signs, the your speed signs wherever in town, I think people would vote for it. I think people who showed up at town meeting probably would have been down, but I think it was people were about.
It might be.
Signs just keep going as people on.
I mean, but it's very, you're never going to be sure if it's set up. It's the extent of it.
They don't think it's expensive.
Well, they're very, I think that right in the middle of the sheriff.
And, and I know that I rely on it. We're always, they, they, they take a lot of maintenance because I understand it. But, um, well, we can try to do that again. I mean.
That's what we're challenging.
They are. They are. Can't we ask the sheriff to say, hey, you know, there's a plate down in that area and maybe I'll turn around and go right in that. That's a little blind spot area. You could sit there and catch the speed or something. It's, you know, move, swing around where they are. But the, the, uh, we just, speed starts at points, doesn't it? Well, no, who does you start? Huh? If you have a, what are they, you know?
I mean, each way.
I'm going to need it down and think of what it's on.
It's going the other way.
They're, they're.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
The speed doesn't increase until you get out of my dreams to go away.
Yeah.
Unless you're paying your revenue and that this way. Or to increase the authority you go after.
I mean, you could move the sign, I guess.
Let's have a look over the weekend. Suddenly more than I went out the valley, there's black marks pulled in for that flood.
Oh, I know. My daughter, my, my daughter noticed that too. Why, wouldn't you see it in the whole place now?
Well, I think the sheriff or more than anything, you go to any location, any phone that you ask them to, they just, they're fine there. Uh, we don't have to just rely on wherever they care. Yeah, so we could just work on that and we try, you know, monitoring this area and that area and, and, you know, we, we need to be more diligent about rotating where they go. And you need to be around the rack and say, let's try a heater this time.
It's just hard with only eight hours a month.
Right, I know, but we can just say, you know, I've spent two hours.
Yeah. We can ask them to go out there. But I think you have to have some kind of response to that.
Oh, I agree for sure.
But I, I mean, we, we can't, we're careful. We can't do anything about the flooding of the river.
So as a private owner, my house was like this house we're talking about, and I wanted to pay my own money to put up a burn around my house. Can I do that?
No.
No.
I can't do that on my private.
You know, they won't, you, you can do it, they find afterwards.
They didn't.
So you can do it and then get fined afterwards if you want.
Yeah.
Pay a fine and then pay someone to fix it.
The cost of owning a property in the flood plain.
Also, they don't have no land left there. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have any, it's a little burial. That, that house is a problematic house, it flooding for many, many years. You know, see all the.
Why?
Long.
Not right.
No, it is a long.
Five, we were supposed to be on the right.
It's a little.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. That's a nice though. They've done a good job. Um, where they. Small.
I'm just thinking of my, my hometown. And this is one of those. I think we're three years old. They had several floods go through Avalon, the Avalon River, Avalon. They separated by the Avalon River and the next time overswiped the field. And everybody's gone to the eastern states, right? That's the land I'm talking about. You go to eastern states, they put up that firm that prevented the water from the Avalon River falling into West Springfield. They didn't do it on the Avalon side. So on the Avalon side, every time it slugs, we call them metal lanes, which is prime, prime, I remember throw a land. And we do one lane there. Um, that floods, it floods right up the main street. All you see is water. But Springfield, West Springfield, this day. This burn, they saved it, but I don't see, but that's enough.
But, but can't be, I'm not sure that, that they could build that today.
Yeah.
You know, that was built a long time ago.
It's still there.
I don't know why you said that. I mean, regulations are different. I mean, I remember when I was on the board, we had a budget to to take trees out of the river. And you can't do that anymore.
Somebody's making a lot of money and a lot of people talking about it. So.
Any other?
You know, the fact that if you were to consider FEMA, what if you tell them? We do, they're just more of a river to flow where it is and that's where it comes from.
And they'll buy you cars.
And they will buy.
What other?
Oh, right, you buy it out and you get a land that you can't. But I, the other thing is, I understand what she's saying, that I, what I said is that a class to let board, meaning how can you emergency meeting where I was on fire, um, is that people just want to be heard when they.
I'm fine. Um, is that people just want to be heard. She just, she just wants, people is to hear what she's saying. She's not expecting the town to go in there and. I mean, maybe she, but people just want to be heard and seen and.
We consider that same information, so. People heard about. Any other comment? If not, the, um, next regular meeting will be on a Monday. August twenty-first here at six P M. And somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn. Any other question? If not, all favor of the German, and I, I propose, thank you for coming for our shared.
The seventeenth, I think that's Thursday, ten days. No.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.